Bonjour, good afternoon, everyone. We will call the meeting to order. Madame Lagrefia.
Your worship, the first item would be the approval of the agenda.
So could I have a mover and a second or Conseiller Richard, Conseiller Kingston? Merci. Any questions? There are no questions, so we will go to a show of hands for the approval of the agenda. Don't. Merci.
And next would be the adoption.
Do you have the agenda?
Yes.
I'm going to vote nay. We have one item. Better use of my time. I'll vote nay just for the simplicity.
So we have one nay vote, is that correct? C'est vrai? Oui? Merci, Madame Lagrefia.
Next would be the adoption of the minutes of October 27th, Committee of the Whole.
Could I have a mover and a second for the minutes, please? Conseiller Rich, Conseiller Butler and Conseiller Kingston. Any questions on the minutes? If not, we will go to a show of hands. Donc, motion carried. Merci, Madame Lagrefia.
Next, our declarations of conflict of interest. Les déclarations des conflits d'intérêt.
Est-ce qu'il y a des conflits d'intérêt? Non? Y'en a pas?
Next is new business, and there is one item under new business. Elmwood-McLaughlin corridor transportation master plan. And I believe that Ellen is... No, Radia, somebody, anybody.
C'est qui?
Renee.
Bonjour, Renee.
Mikro.
Good afternoon, members of council. Mia from EXP is here to present the results of the Elmwood and McLaughlin corridor study. This is a study that was presented to council earlier this year. However, at the time, we hadn't done the public engagement session. So this is to finalize the results or finalize the report that's in front of you. And again, with some interesting key findings in the public engagement session. So I will do a conclusion, but I'll let Mia go through the findings of the report. Mia?
Bonjour, Mia. Bonjour. Merci de me donner cette occasion de vous présenter le projet de l'étude du couloir des promenades Elmwood et McLaughlin. Pour avancer les...
You can touch the screen.
Ça a changé un petit peu depuis. Ah, tu fais l'écran. Ah, l'écran. Alors, il y avait plusieurs personnes qui étaient impliquées dans le projet. Ici, c'est une liste de toutes les personnes qui ont participé à l'étude. Je voulais mentionner la présence de Monsieur Richard Boregaldon, qui faisait partie du ministère des Transports et Infrastructure de la province. Ils étaient présents aux réunions du projet. Mais je voulais mentionner que ils ont participé à l'étude, mais ils n'ont pas vraiment officiellement approuvé aucune des recommandations du rapport. Il s'agirait encore de la ville Pharoah qui collabore avec le ministère lorsque les projets vont venir de l'avant dans le futur, lorsque ce sera le temps de faire de la construction ou la conception des projets. All right. I will be doing the presentation in English. Thank you for allowing me to present a little bit in French. So if you do have any questions at the end in English or in French, feel free to ask in your language of choice. Just as a reminder, for the study area for this project included Elmwood Drive. It's about seven kilometers long, and it begins around the intersection of McLaughlin and Elmwood near Massey Avenue and extends all the way to Longfellow Drive. And the McLaughlin Drive section was about three kilometers. And it starts at the same intersection at the south with Elmwood and McLaughlin and finishes at near Granite Drive. The objectives of the project were to update the city's transportation visum model and to assess some of the changes in vehicle traffic flows for future roadway connections and future land development in the area, and also to improve some operational efficiencies of key intersections and to plan for future transportation network improvements in the two corridors. During the course of the study, which the study I should mention started in 2023, we did a lot of data gathering and included a lot of traffic data collection and review of right-of-way limitations along the corridor. So in the image in the middle of the screen here, you'll see some notes about right-of-way. The blue indicates the location where there's 20 meters of right-of-way. The green at the top along Elmwood Drive shows that there is about 30 meters of right-of-way. And the other locations have varying widths between 24 meters. Near the TransCanada Highway, there are some limitations with what we can do for infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists. So underneath the bridges for the TransCanada Highway, in some sections, there's only about 15 meters of space at McLaughlin. And then at Elmwood Drive, there's about 17.5 meters of space. I mentioned the visum model. It's a transportation model that the city has to help plan for future road network improvements. So the model was calibrated to the 2021, 2022 population. And various scenarios were looked at for new connections for roadways and trying to plan for future population growth in different sections along Elmwood Drive and McLaughlin Drive. So this image on this slide shows some zones that have a varying population for the current conditions. And based on the future growth of population, the total population currently is about 14,300. And in the future, it's projected that there might be about 26,000 people living in these zones. In the visum model, there's links and nodes that allow us to project out how much vehicle traffic may disperse through the roadway network. So there were different scenarios that were looked at for new and future road connections. And then there's also a component in the visum model that looks at transit, transit modeling. So I'm not going to go into those minor details. I'm trying to get to as quickly as possible to the next slides, which are going to talk about improvements. But this slide shows some of the key intersections that were analyzed for vehicle delays in traffic operations. And these are some of the intersections where improvements were proposed. As part of the analysis of different scenarios for road network improvements, there were scenarios one, three, four, and seven that were analyzed for new roadway connections. And specifically, I'm going to mention scenario three and four. Scenario three had a new future connection to McLaughlin from McLaughlin Drive to the TransCanada Highway. And in scenario four, we also looked at the traffic volumes that might be generated or redirected if Crowley Farm Road was connected to the Leopold-Belleville Drive and to Morton Avenue. The future scenario seven was a scenario that looked at all the future road network improvements along the corridors. So after we did all the analysis and come up with a list of recommendations, there were some key considerations that were important to highlight. And those are more general recommendations for both corridors. Some of them included improvements to managing vehicle left-turn movements along the corridor to try to improve the safety of vehicles traveling on Elmwood Drive and McLaughlin. These are not any recommendations specific to a location, but more in general for the entire corridor. There's also the acquisition of right-of-way, which is going to be a key consideration in the future with regards to implementing some of the recommendations going forward. There are a lot of limitations with how much space there is to improve pedestrian and cycling infrastructure. There's a lot of other lists that came out of this report that talked about improving transit amenities and improving some pedestrian crossings, which I will show on the next slide. There was also a recommendation to include, to implement some traffic calming measures along McLaughlin Drive near the school zones. It was found that there was vehicle traveling at greater speeds in the school zones on McLaughlin. All right. As part of the recommendations, there were 16 improvements that came out of the list, and a phasing plan was outlined. With regards to how these improvements could be implemented in the very short term, here, there are some that are shown in pink on this slide. And the short term in green, the medium term in yellow, and the long, long-term ones are in orange. Some concept plans were developed as part of the project to highlight a little bit more the specific improvements that might be implemented on Elmwood Drive and McLaughlin. And so these helps us with determining costs of how much this could cost in the future. The image on the screen right at the moment shows an orange line on the right-hand side. It's meant to represent the multi-use path that is recommended to be constructed in the future on both Elmwood Drive and McLaughlin. It's recommended it be installed on the east side. The cross-section that is shown on the screen is a 20-meter cross-section. And we feel that with this 20 meters of space that you do already have on these two sections, this would be a good compromise. And I say compromise because sometimes cyclists and pedestrians don't like to share the facility. But because of the limitations of right-of-way, it was felt that it would be an acceptable compromise, I guess, for pedestrians and cyclists to have to share the facility. The middle portion of the cross-section shows three lanes for vehicle traffic. However, the three lanes are not necessary for the entire length of the corridor. There might be some places where you may want a left-turn pocket for vehicles to wait to turn left. And there's other locations where the additional lane could be used for a bus lay-by. So with the 20 meters of right-of-way, we feel that this would be a good cross-section to be implemented on these two streets. There are not necessarily destinations on both sides of the road. So for example, on Elmwood Drive, in this location, there's a cemetery on the west side. However, there are bus routes that travel in the southbound direction on Elmwood that do drop off or pick up passengers on the west side. And so in order for those transit passengers to safely cross the road, pedestrian, new pedestrian crossings are recommended to be installed at some key locations. And they're represented on this image with the pedestrian crossing sign. The next concept plan that we have up on the screen is the section from Morton Avenue to Hennessy. It shows that there are limitations with the right-of-way along this section of the corridor. In order to continue to implement the multi-use path and also make it safer for motorists to travel through the corridor, we've shown these cross-sections with a median. So this median doesn't necessarily need to be implemented throughout the corridor, but it's something maybe to consider as the project advances in the design phase, that these are a preferred cross-section to ensure that motorists don't necessarily have to slow down and wait for somebody in front of them to make a left-turn movement. But in order to implement the cross-section in this way, there would be about 31 meters of right-of-way that would be needed for the five-lane cross-section. This is the image on the bottom left of your screen. And the top left is the 28-meter cross-section. So both of these cross-sections do require acquisition of right-of-way. So it's not necessarily telling you that this is what must be built. It's just a recommendation of what could be built and what you might want to look for in the future if there's opportunity to buy additional property to provide this type of cross-section on the corridor. There are acquisitions that might be required. The next slide shows the continuation of Elmwood Drive north of Hennessy to Granite. The traffic operations analysis showed that with roundabouts at the three major intersections here, the vehicle delays would be less than if it stayed as a signalized intersection. The red rectangles in the middle of your screen show that there are limitations again with right-of-way. And so those are all have to be considered in the future. The multi-use path is still the recommendation for providing a safe space for cyclists to cross through this area because of the space requirements. This facility would offer you a better, I guess, a compromise in solutions to provide facilities that are safe for both vulnerable user, the walker and the cyclist. Just a continuation of Elmwood Drive again, north of the TransCanada Highway. There are a couple of locations where the right-of-way is limited. Those are shown in red with the right-of-way only being 20 meters. The continuation of the multi-use path is shown on the east side. And it would terminate or connect to, I should say, the existing path that is at Cedarwood. There are some new pedestrian, new pedestrian crossings that are recommended along the corridor as well as a new sidewalk on the west side. So just north of Granite Drive, the sidewalk just terminates. It doesn't go anywhere. So if you do need to walk along Elmwood Drive, either to take the bus or just to... If you live in the area, there is currently no facility for pedestrians or cyclists to travel along this corridor. And the last slide here for Elmwood, it shows new pedestrian crossings at Royal Oaks Boulevard and Longfellow Drive and a new pedestrian crossing at Cedarwood as well. The next two slides are for McLaughlin. The red, sorry, not the red. The orange line that is shown on the east side of the road shows again the continuation of multi-use path that is recommended to be constructed. The right-of-way along the corridor here is about 20 meters. So there shouldn't be any need or very little need to acquire right-of-way. There might be some relocations of hydrants or utility poles to... If the project goes ahead in this way with the three lanes for vehicle traffic, but at least the right-of-way appears to be adequate to provide the three-vehicle lanes, a multi-use path on the east and a sidewalk on the west. There are some pedestrian crossing improvements recommended as part of the report to narrow the crossings. So currently, the road, if you need to cross the road, it's about 10 meters to cross the road. But in certain situations, our possibility to reduce the crossing distance could be as little as 6.6 meters. So it takes less time for the pedestrian to cross the road when the path is narrowed. The next slide is a continuation of McLaughlin Drive north of Leopold-F-Belleville. And the area here shows that there are some limitation requirements with right-of-way. There's a future area where there could be interchange with the TransCanada Highway. However, the plans for the interchange have not been finalized. And so this just shows the area where it could be, it would be impacted by new ramps. The cost to build the entire project improvements were about $31 million. There's different details of the cost estimates that were provided in the final report. This is an image that just shows the different locations of how the additional costs might be incurred for the different zones. And the final couple of slides we have here today just talks a little bit about the public consultation that began in May of 2025. So there were some online survey questions asked. And I believe about 200 respondents answered the survey. And then we also had an open house at the end of May. The results or the notes that are have on the screen today, just wanted to highlight a couple of the survey results. So a lot of the people that answered the survey do use vehicles for their mode of transportation. So it's about 84%. The respondents were asked a question about what were their priorities or their top concerns for the corridor. And a lot of people did say the cyclist's safety is on top of mind. They feel that that should be something that should be prioritized. And the traffic congestion as well was the number-two item on people's minds. And pedestrian safety was came up in the third category. With regards to some of the improvements that were provided to the survey, respondents said that most beneficial improvement they could see from what came out of the list of proposed improvements was the connection to Crowley Farm Road. The least important improvements were related to the bike lane delineators on McLaughlin that were shown to be a short-term improvement that the city is looking to implement. The median on Elmwood to prevent left turns from Mill Road. I guess the respondents didn't think that that would be as important as other improvements. With regards to the multi-use path, this did receive a slightly better support compared to unidirectional facilities. So people did seem to, the respondents did seem to be in favor of the multi-use path. The respondents, some of the questions during this survey were related to the comfort level of people driving through a roundabout or driving through a signalized intersection. So a lot of the people said that they were comfortable traveling by a vehicle through a roundabout, but they were not as comfortable going through a roundabout as a pedestrian or a cyclist. They, when the survey respondents had an opportunity to provide additional comments, it was quite interesting to look through all the questions. And then when we got to the question about the signalized intersection and roundabouts, that was the one that had a lot of comments, like written a really long explanation of what people had opinions on. So it was interesting to read all of those comments. The multi-use path appears to be a good compromise for active transportation users because they recognize that this is a built-out corridor and there are limitations with the right-of-way. So I just wanted to highlight that. And in terms of prioritization, they do feel that infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists should be prioritized. And as well, as I mentioned before, the Crowley Farm Road connection also received a high marks for priority. The McLaughlin Drive interchange received mixed reviews. A lot of people were in favor of the McLaughlin Drive interchange connecting to the Route 2 TransCanada Highway. However, there were a lot of opinions or people that felt that that should not be prioritized because that would lead to more vehicle traffic on an already busy McLaughlin Drive. Some of the other elements were related to specific connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists. So some people felt that there's some missing links for sidewalks and cycling infrastructure. The intersection of McLaughlin and Elmwood received a lot of, that's the Y-shaped intersection, I'm going to call it. So a lot of people that responded to the survey were concerned because in the original list of recommendations, there were no specific geometric or traffic control improvements recommended as part of that intersection. So when we went back to review all the lists and wanted to make sure that we included anything that stood out from the survey, we did reconsider that intersection and made some recommendations that could be implemented for that intersection. A lot of respondents to the survey noted that there should be some more improvements to transit in terms of frequency and amenities for the transit. And the traffic calming in the neighborhoods adjacent to McLaughlin did come up as part of the concerns that in the future, when there's additional traffic signals implemented on McLaughlin, it's felt that there might be some motorists that would try to avoid the corridor that now has a lot more traffic signals and try to cut through some easier routes nearby. So traffic calming in the adjacent neighborhoods to McLaughlin may need to be considered going forward to ensure that the cut-through traffic doesn't increase on the roads. So we finalized the report and gave a final report to the city. And I'm here today to, I guess, to present this project. And the next slide, I guess, is Renee wanted to mention a couple of things that have been done since we finalized the report.
Merci, Mia. We just, as Mia mentioned, we just wanted to highlight some of the quick wins, I guess, that were implemented or in the process or planning to be implemented. So the first thing is that we did install a new traffic signal at the intersection of McLaughlin and Leopold-F-Belleville. Now, the car detection devices are still missing, so the traffic signal is not optimized. So if you get any concerns or... So if you get any concerns or complaints, you can let your residents know that optimization of the traffic signal is coming shortly. We're also planning to install a new crosswalk on Elmwood Drive at Cedarwood. So that was a recommendation of the report, and it's planned, budgeted and planned for 2026. Just out of that crosswalk, the widening of Elmwood Drive between Granite and Cedarwood is still a priority for the city and for the engineering department. We have submitted the application for funding through the SHIFT program and still waiting an answer, a response for that funding. We're also in 2026, plan and budgeted, doing a reconstruction of the lower section of Elmwood Drive between Louisville and Massey. And we plan to install a multipurpose trail on the east side of Elmwood Drive between Louisville and Church, sorry, Louisville and Donald. So the lower portion there. Just again, trying to get connectivity when we can for our active transportation network. And the McLachlan Drive is also, also have done, we've done some improvements. Just the line painting work that we've done last year, I think, really changed the, that section of McLachlan Drive between Morton and Leopold F. Beliveau. We repainted the bike lanes a little wider. I think our Public Works crew did a good job of putting the green paint where it should be. Does it have a different feeling where you're driving as a motorist? It has that traffic calming effect. And next year, we will be installing some delineators to create that extra separation between the bike lane and the travel lane. So again, just, I think, speaking about traffic calming, those are the types of tools that are in the toolbox and they seem to work. And the last one, the ongoing connection, we heard a lot about it. How do we connect Leopold F. Beliveau to Crowley Farm Road, which would provide a direct connection to Wheeler Boulevard? This seems to be the most efficient way to create some traffic dispersal in the area. Because when you think about Morton McLachlan, one of the busiest intersections in the city, and specifically that left-turn movement from Morton Avenue onto McLachlan, those queues are probably the longest left-turning queues that we have in our city. Having that extra connection there would provide that traffic dispersal. So we recognize that it's a priority. However, the challenges are there. This is not city land, it's all private land. So we're working with the property owners, and this is through our Vision Lands Charge Area Plan that you are familiar with, that we will eventually have that connection. So the recommendations really is to, you know, when these projects are being designed and tendered, we'll come back to council with some details. I'd just like to point out that the cost estimate, that is just over $30 million for all these improvements, do not include land acquisition, do not include pole relocation if we have to, and also does not include the Elmwood Drive widening portion between Granite and Cedarwood. So there's a lot of components that are excluded from the cost estimate. And once we get down to the detailed design, it's fair to estimate that, to conclude that these costs will go up, especially when we look at land acquisition for some of these components. We're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your attention.
Merci beaucoup, Renee and Mia. We have a motion, so Consul Richard, do you wish to move the motion? And Counselor Crossman, do you wish to second? C'est bon, merci. And on the questions, go ahead, Consul Richard.
Merci, Madame Estadio. Thank you both. Merci pour la présentation, Mia. So I'm glad you mentioned that, you both mentioned the Crowley Farm Road, Leopold Beliveau connection, how important that is. I hope we, I hope we get that going soon, as soon as possible. We should, I'm guessing that you would be suggesting or that this be done before that highway-to-exchange at McLachlan? Just to divert some traffic?
Thank you for the question. The, that connection with Leopold Beliveau is really development-driven, but it's a higher priority for us than the interchange. The interchange with McLachlan and TCH, as Mia mentioned, there's no commitment whatsoever from NBDTI at this point. We still had it in our model, just to see what the impacts were. And also, there were some opposite, opposing thoughts to it, as Mia mentioned. Yes, it creates some traffic dispersal, but it would bring more traffic to an already-busy McLachlan Drive. So as far as benefit or cost benefit, we definitely see the extension or connection of Leopold Beliveau to Crowley Farm as a higher priority, for sure.
That's great. And Crowley Farm can carry?
Can carry the traffic?
Yep.
There would be probably some upgrades required to Crowley Farm Road, the lower section, as far as connecting it to Wheeler. That would be all part of the design, yes, because it is a rural road at the moment.
Okay. The sightlines at McLachlan, McLachlan and Kelly intersection, that area, sightlines should be assessed and remedial measures are recommended if required. Do we know what, what can we do there to make that better?
Do you have any recommendations for that?
I didn't see any suggestions, that's why I'm asking.
When it comes to sightline issues, what the things we could look at is trying to reduce speeds because speed is affected, the sightlines are affected by the prevailing speeds. Other than that, it is, it is a hill that's causing it, correct? So as far, I'm just looking at radio measures?
Traffic signals at Kelly or?
At both sides, Granite and?
So one of the recommendations are traffic signals at Kelly, one of the longer-term recommendations. And so that would obviously, you know, improve the situation.
Definitely, okay. Just a note for IC Operations is here. So McLachlan between Morton and Elmwood, snow clearing is already a priority one on the west-side sidewalk. I'd hope that Operations would add the new east-side multi-use path as a priority one with the school located in the middle of these two ends. Just a note. See? I'm glad you smiled. It sounds like the cyclists would rather the multi-use path versus actual bike paths. Is that what I understood? I just want clarification. No, no, she, that was a hard no.
No, the majority of cyclists do not want to share the path with walkers. However, so, this is a, I guess, if you're a cyclist, you usually don't like to share with the pedestrians, and pedestrians don't like it when cyclists zoom by them very quickly. And so the compromise here is to get everybody to slow down and use this path as a slower path. And if by having a wider space, it does invite more families to go out and cycle together. Instead of having a unidirectional cycling lane, those are tended to be used more by an individual person and less as a group. So there's conflicting benefits, I guess, to each type of cyclist.
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
No, I understand, no. That, I'm glad I asked the question. So would we be removing some bike lanes for added multi-use paths in the future?
So in the case of Elmwood Drive, the right-of-way there is restricted. So we would actually, we'd have to purchase right-of-way and private property in order to build a multipurpose trail. What would happen is one of, sidewalks on one side would be removed and replaced with a multipurpose trail, but we need that extra space because a trail is wider than a sidewalk. On the case of McLachlan Drive, where there are existing bike lanes, that helps us because once we, if we do a reconstruction, we can bring the curb, the concrete curb inwards a bit, and that creates some extra space, again, to replace one of the sidewalk with a multipurpose trail. So it all depends on which section are we talking about, which street. But in the case of Elmwood Drive, that'll be the challenge, a bit more challenging because of the lack of right-of-way. And then depending on the section of Elmwood Drive, you're into parking lots, you're affecting businesses, and that's where it's becoming really challenging.
No, great presentation, great information, I appreciate it. Merci.
Merci, Consul Richard, Consul Crossman.
Thank you, Your Worship, Renee. Thank you for the presentation. I know I was there, and I think it was May when we did the consultation. Seemed like there was a lot of residents from the Active Transportation Committee that were there as well. So this is showing what their input was as far as bicycle use goes because that's really what they were talking and driving towards was the bicycle use. So I just want to make sure we're on record and we understand that, and that's, that was a part of the crowd that was there, and then there was walkers there as well, and so on and so forth. Renee, you had made a comment about the continuing widening of Elmwood Drive. I'll direct my question to Mr. CAO, but LaMara and myself and Mr. CAO were in Fredericton not long ago on this matter. And maybe he does have an update for us, or maybe he doesn't. So I'll direct the question to him because he knows the outcome of that meeting. So Mr. CAO, do you have any further information on that meeting?
Not at this point in time. I know that we provided the provincial the information that they've requested to date. They have a complete file, if you want to call it that. We are still waiting for confirmation for a meeting with our federal MP. So we're just waiting for confirmation of that date.
Okay. So Renee, so now you know, at least we're getting somewhere. Counselor Steve said I was excited to come here today because I've been waiting for this report since I've been 16. I told him I was 15, but anyway. I'm glad to see this come forward, but I'm going to focus on the 467-page report that I had some time to read while I was sitting in a plane flying to Montreal on Friday. And it was driven, there's a lot of sections in there, and I'm not going to break them all down, but the ones that really stuck out for me were public safety was 2.4.1. We're talking about speed of vehicles on McLachlan and Elmwood. As I scroll down, you know, and I mean, they're well over the posted speed limits. There's no question. And as I scroll down, then the report, really well done, details the amount of collisions per intersection throughout the entire corridor that we're talking about today, McLachlan and Elmwood Drive. And a quick math is 153 collisions within three years at these intersections. So to me, obviously, and Renee, you've heard me talk about traffic control, red light cameras. I think this is even going to give me a little bit more when I have these conversations with the local MLAs. You know, and if the public minister reaches out, like he has done in Fredericton, to talk about red light cameras, that this is just another tool in the toolkit to help promote. Obviously, what we see going on here is, and I can't say if it's neglect or if it's distraction, but why so many accidents within a short phrase? What would you say, Renee?
It's a good question. I like to start by saying I do agree that enforcement is part of the solution, right? And we've talked about this before, like our police officers cannot be everywhere every time. So red light detection, that does also, speed detection is part of the toolbox. And we've been working with the RCMP on a pilot project. And the, where we want to start looking at these are, one of the intersections is part of the pilot, oh, sorry, the study area that you guys are looking at today. And, you know, we'd like to see more from engineering's point of view because we know we're just part of the solution with traffic calming measures, that it can only go so far, enforcement can only go so far. Then it's education and just simply people smartening up. There's no other way to put it, really, once you get all those tools. So definitely part of the strategy is reducing those speeds. If there are sightline issues like we discussed on Kelly, trying to resolve them. And yeah, aggressive driving behaviors. I don't have an explanation for it.
No, that's fine. I didn't expect you to, but you answered my question well. This is something that I'm concerned about because we've got the schools close to the, within these boundaries, really. And these are little kids, these are kids that are just starting out of school, and some of them. And, you know, we've got this going on on our main right-of-ways, main roads, right? So I was really concerned because when I look at the pedestrian, because the report does say how many collisions with pedestrians as well and things along this line. So it's really well detailed. I like that a lot. The multi-use trail came up earlier. I can tell you that when I'm out at Iristown Nature Park, the one north of the Iristown Nature Park is used quite a bit by families. You're right, there's no question about that. That would be gorgeous to see coming all the way down to Granite Drive on that same side. Because I can tell you, it is families. When you talk about families that are getting on bikes. And thank you, Renee, for the, the traffic, I'm going to call it the crosswalk. You know, that will allow a lot of those families to come out of Pine Tree and to come out of Royal Oaks and to cross safely to get to that multi-use trail on the other side. So that's very impressive. One thing, and I'm not sure if you've seen this or not, Renee, a couple of years ago, I think it might have been my first term on council, there was a report done, or maybe it wasn't my first term, by EXP on McLachlan and Elmwood, and specifically that island. Do you remember that or?
And we're talking about the Y-intersection between the two?
Yeah, the Y-intersection, yeah. Do you remember that report being done? Okay. I thought it might have been just me. And I'm not going to put you on the spot to say what came out of the report. Do you remember what came out of the report?
I believe, I believe it was traffic signals that was recommended for that intersection.
For that intersection.
Yeah, it was part of the Louisville Road Traffic Study.
Right. Okay, good. I'll look that up again. Thank you, I appreciate that. And Renee, as far as this document that I was more than happy to second, this is a live document. This can change depending on development within certain areas. And different priorities can come to light quicker than, like, when I look at your report, and pardon me, I've got to go on a different screen here on the laptop. Let's just say the traffic circles along Elmwood Drive from Granite Drive coming back to the east off-ramp. You know, those could become a priority if the development happens along Elmwood Drive the way that we're hoping it happens, right? To alleviate traffic, to things along that line. So none of this is in stone, and this can strictly change based on priorities.
For sure. I totally agree. It's, and even like the individual recommendations are really at the concept level at this point, and those could change and, once we start kind of looking at design. But definitely on the priority side of things, this is a long-term plan. And so things, you know, can change drastically with just one development. We've seen it with the Costco effect. So things can happen, yes.
Yeah. And one last thing, if we do, and you did say you're working on a pilot project possibly with the RCMP?
Correct.
For traffic control, red light cameras?
Yes.
Just imagine the funding that comes in from the violations because it's a user-pay system. Let's be honest with this. If you run a red light, if you block an intersection, you're caught there. That is the user-pay system.
Correct, except that the revenues would go to the province.
Unfortunately, at this point, I like that comment. At least I didn't, at least I didn't have to make it. Just imagine the amount of money, if there is, and we can't forecast what the amount of money would be, but to have that money come back into the city of Moncton, into public safety and into transportation, where we could actually get these projects done sooner rather than later, right? In the long term. So I thank you for answering my questions, you did the best you could. And thanks for the presentation. But I, I remember doing an EXP back a number of years ago, so. Good, thank you, thank you, Your Worship.
Merci, Consul Crossman, Consul Bonsoir.
Merci beaucoup, Madame LaMara. Merci, Madame La Forge au tour, Monsieur Legassé. J'ai quatre ou cinq questions. La première, c'est dans votre scénario de croissance démographique. Vous prévoyez qu'on sera rendu à 100 000 personnes en 2030. On est déjà rendu là. Est-ce que cette croissance-là, puis on va continuer là? Je sais pas comment vite, comment se rend à 131, mais c'est certainement pas en 2046 là. Ça sera peut-être en 2036. Mais est-ce que ça, cette croissance-là, chambarde quelque chose dans vos recommandations? Autre que, faut aller plus vite?
Merci pour votre question. Je suis pas certaine si je suis en position de pouvoir répondre parce que le modèle a été fait en fonction de différentes croissances là. C'est pour toute la ville de Moncton. Vous, vous disiez qu'on est dépassé la population qui était montrée sur l'écran, c'est ça?
Je laisserai quelqu'un me corriger, mais les derniers chiffres que moi j'ai eus, c'est qu'on est si pas à 100 000, juste en dessous ou juste au-dessus, mais c'est pas plus qu'une couple de centaines de personnes.
Peut-être faire une mise à jour du modèle, on va laisser ça. Radio de s'occuper de faire la mise à jour. Si la population du modèle est, démonte pas les bons chiffres, faudra faire une recalibration du modèle pour pouvoir évaluer les corridors routiers.
Parce que vous avez certains chiffres qu'il faudra faire ça-ci par 2030, puis ça par 2046. Mais j'ai l'impression si la croissance, est-ce que je propose de l'être? C'est pas mes chiffres, c'est que je l'ai vu ailleurs. Ou que ça va augmenter, on sera?
Oui, il pourrait y avoir plus de congestion pour les automobilistes. Oui, il pourrait y avoir plus de congestion pour les automobilistes, alors il faudra peut-être prioriser d'autres modes de transport, puis aider les gens à se rendre, se déplacer d'une différente façon autre que utiliser leur véhicule.
Je sais pas comment le dire, mais essentiellement on est en train de regarder des chiffres qui sont cinquante vieux, puis là, on se projette dans nos budgets avec cinq ans d'arrière. Lorsque ça va venir à la réunion publique pour ratification de la décision, dépendamment de ce qu'on vote aujourd'hui, il faut que ça soit approuvé par le Conseil, ça vaudrait peut-être la peine, si vous êtes capables, je sais pas quand est-ce qu'on revient, mais d'avoir dire, ah, ben, un petit peu comme avec le conseiller Crossman qui dit, ben, ça peut évoluer avec le temps, on a adopté deux immenses développements juste au nord de la transcanadienne, chez Elmwood, un à l'est et un à l'ouest, ça va peut-être commencer dans les prochaines années, ça pourrait être amplifié, mais nos chiffres-là sont pas corrects, ou sont un petit peu arriérés, ça fait peut-être ajouter une sorte de réflexion, d'après moi, ça veut dire, il faudra avancer des choses plus vite qu'on l'a prévu, mais je risque de me corriger, je vous laisse faire cette réflexion-là. Ma deuxième question, c'est, j'ai pas compris, puis je l'ai lu à deux fois, medium-term improvements implementing a median on Elmwood to prevent left-turn movements from Mill Road to McLeish Lane. Je regarde la carte, j'ai souvent pris ça, c'est impossible de prendre une gauche de Mill Road jusqu'à la McLeish, parce qu'ils sont parallèles, so city virer de gauche de la Elmwood à la McLeish?
Ce qu'on veut dire, c'est que le median, donc le terplan ou la bordure serait installé entre Mill Road et McLeish, et non pas, pour pas décrire le mouvement, mais ça serait sur la Elmwood Drive, entre l'intersection de Mill Road et l'intersection de McLeish, il y aurait justement un terplan en milieu, un peu comme on a comme à Sompion, pour prévenir les véhicules de tourner à gauche sur ce secteur-là. Donc pas d'une rue à l'autre, mais plutôt from-to, si tu veux.
Ouais, je sais pas tout sûr que la phrase est correcte, là. To prevent left-turn movements from Mill Road to McLeish?
Encore là, ça décrit le from-to du median, donc ça va être installé à partir de Mill Road jusqu'à McLeish. C'est sûr qu'on en aurait pu reformuler la, l'annoncer, la phrase, oui.
Okay. Là, moi, je comprends, mais la phrase dit pas ce que, ce qu'il devrait faire. Okay. Est-ce que vous avez exploré, je l'ai lu à deux fois, là, j'ai pas lu le quatre cents quelque pages, là, l'idée d'un rond-point à Elmwood et Morton?
Oui.
C'est de là-dedans?
Oui.
Okay, je l'ai pas vu, merci. Un rond-point entre Elmwood puis McLaughlin, est-ce qu'il est l'Y?
Ça veut dire que tu parlais de ça, le Y? Ça a pas été évalué dans l'étude. Un des gros défis avec ça, c'est l'angle des deux rues, qui arrive dans un angle qui est vraiment pas propice à un rond-point. Habituellement, un rond-point a une séparation, puis on aimerait en priori que chaque tronçon de rue sont séparés de 90 degrés, c'est un rond-point parfait. Donc, c'est sûr que, puis aussi le terrain, le terrain même serait un défi, mais ça faisait pas partie de l'analyse comme telle, pour l'étude de EXP.
Oui, j'ai été en Europe deux fois depuis les deux derniers mois, puis j'en ai compté au moins deux-milles-douzaines comme ça, des Y, mais qui avaient été transformés. Tu rentres d'un rond-point, tu vires à gauche, le première droite et la deuxième droite, puis ça fonctionne là, je sais pas pourquoi ça fonctionnerait pas ici. C'est beau. Merci beaucoup, merci madame LaMara.
Merci conseiller Bourgeois. Est-ce qu'il y a d'autres conseils que vous donnez à l'élite?
Thank you, Madame Mares. Thank you Mia, Renee, and Radia. I know it's conceptual and proposed, and it's going to come back, but it's very exciting, potentially very exciting for those of us who know the area as well, and obviously, we all do. The roundabouts at Morton, that would be, I think they work very, very well, and obviously, you know that. And if the potential connection is coming to Leopold and Crawley, anything to take away that load to divert to Wheeler would be a tremendous move. And to Counselor Bourgeois's point, yeah, Elmwood as well, too. They keep going back to the Y at McLaughlin and Elmwood, Counselor Crossman and Counselor Bourgeois, and I'm the same way. I was in Sunnybri for a dozen years, and it's a tricky one, but it's a tough left coming up Elmwood. And if you're backed up three or four or five cars, you're now in front of the climatin almost. And it's really a dicey, complicated maneuver. It works, but it's, you know, any traffic calming measures for that Y would be certainly appreciated. I'm not thinking maybe roundabout, the island is there. I never assumed that was part of the conversation. But again, that's a tough one. It may be a short-term fix, but anything you can do on that Y at Elmwood and McLaughlin would be welcome as well. Just general comments. Thank you. Merci.
Merci conseiller Kingston, conseiller Léger.
Merci, Madame Mares. Thanks for the presentation. I'm just curious, three things. You talked about in the presentation, the least important improvements, and you highlighted the bike lane delineators on McLaughlin. Any idea why, we keep hearing the reverse all the time, so why all of a sudden, they don't want, people don't want delineators? Would they, by any chance, non-cyclists, or is it just a general?
That is a possibility, yes, that the respondents that noted those, that would be not as important to spend the money on. I can't really answer why some people gave those answers.
The other one that surprised me, if I understood this correctly, you were talking about the McLaughlin Drive interchange. And did they, did they really understand what impact that would have in terms of traffic flow and so on, as opposed to, just because they're more or less indicating it was low priority? And I'm just trying to understand why, because it usually would allow a better connectivity.
Yeah, thank you for the question. It's, we're noting that these were only concept plans, so we didn't really have, we didn't kind of show all the potential traffic impact per se. But the concern was really about, certain people felt that, however, it'd be a great connection for people that don't have to go on Hennessy and Elmwood to get to TCH. There were some concerns that that would bring more traffic on McLaughlin Drive. So, it was more contradicting, I guess, opinions, if you wish. So, it made it lower on the priority list, because certain people didn't really want to have that added traffic on McLaughlin Drive.
But there was no data presented indicating what the traffic flow numbers and so on might be. It was more or less people's perception?
Yes, we, part of the model, Mia, correct me if I'm wrong, but you would have had some numbers, but those numbers weren't necessarily shared with people. It was just a general concept, what would happen if we would connect McLaughlin to TCH with an interchange, and then people had to comment on it.
So what's the rationale for asking a question but not giving the details, and then people make a comment because they don't know, as opposed to giving them the details and asking them to make a comment on the information made available? In other words, they may not like it, because they have in their own mind what this might do, but if that's not the case, I'm just wondering. In other words, it adds no value. It's just, you know, like, I don't see that as, I wouldn't take that to indicate that that isn't worth it, because they didn't have the right information or all of the information?
I think when it comes to engagement, I think there's just a certain level of information you want to share with people. I'm not sure which level we want to go down. I mean, really tough answer, tough question to answer, conseiller Léger, to be honest with you. Sorry.
I have one last question. I know I've asked this, and I've pointed it out a number of times, but I'm going to try again, because sometimes it's like, you know, you have to do things over the course. But, so, I brought up Fredericton, the city of Fredericton, and I brought up the Boyce Market, the, their market, and it's in a residential neighborhood. And last year, or probably now, goes back probably three years ago, they added small roundabouts. And if you look at, if you were to go on Google Earth, and you were to look at these roundabouts, except for a little shaving of the, of where the streets interconnect, they've more or less rounded them off, and they've created these roundabouts. And they've created a series of probably, I don't know, at least 10 of them, and they've been very successful at slowing traffic down, traffic flows beautifully. So, my question is, and I did ask at one, I've asked before, but I did ask that staff take a look and maybe have a better understanding of why this works in Fredericton, and why aren't we being able to implement these, rather than stop signs everywhere and street lights and so on? And so, maybe my question will be to the city manager. It's pretty frustrating when it works there. And it works, and these are small residential neighborhoods. So, for example, you could put this on Purdy. It's not rocket science. They didn't, they did not expropriate any property to be able to do these. Now, in the beginning, they had some difficulty, because some people drove right over them. Okay? So, there was a learning curb, they admit that, but bottom line is, they work. And if you drive along, it slows traffic down, because you really can't speed, because you got to go around, and there are every, you know, where there once was a stop sign, there's a roundabout. So, can I just ask that maybe it be looked at and come back to council and say, so why couldn't we do that? Because adding stop signs doesn't work.
Yeah, sure.
And these are on one lane, these are one lane. They're not, we're not talking anything major, it's just one lane.
Yeah. So mini-roundabouts is what they're called in Rizalera, or they're a known or recognized traffic calming measure, and it's something we can look at. There's certain intersection in town where there are already four-way stops, and, you know, you could implement that, and just to have like an added traffic calming measure. I just want to point out, there was one installed in the city of Dieppe several years ago, and they had to remove it because they were challenged by someone with visibly impairment. And I don't know what the details are, but we should discuss with the city of Dieppe first as to why they were forced to do so, before we embarked on that journey.
I'd suggest discussing with the city of Fredericton, it has so many of them, and they've not removed them. So I don't know what Dieppe did, but it's worth having the discussion. But really, I, anyway, I feel...
Perhaps, perhaps, Counselor, perhaps I can jump in here. And again, this is perhaps another conversation than this plan, but we will definitely look at that as part of our traffic calming approach moving forward. And again, check with the other cities that have done it. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Merci, merci beaucoup, monsieur Gérard. There are no other questions, so we will go to electronic and electronic votes. Merci, we have one, do we have one-day vote?
Yes, we saw a one-day vote, conseiller Bourgeois.
Conseiller Bourgeois, yes. So motion carried, merci.
Si.
On a fini?
Une clôture, la clôture, yeah, la motion.
So conseiller Richard, on va clôturer la réunion, merci, merci beaucoup. Thank you, everyone.
Can we just take a five-minute break?